Good afternoon. The time is 1:31 PM. The date is Thursday, May 2nd, 2024. I hereby call to order the regularly scheduled City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. It's another beautiful day in paradise, and so we'll begin our meeting. I'll first start off by asking our Board Secretary to please call the roll. Christopher Haggen? Here. Christopher Cammer? Alfred Field?
Present.
Excuse me. Michael Hyman?
Here.
Jonathan Burgess?
Here.
Dana Peacock?
Here.
Matthew Chambers?
Here.
May the record reflect, Christopher Cammer is not in attendance tonight. Okay, thank you. It appears that we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed. I'll start off, please, by having everyone rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was March 7th, 2024. These were all distributed in the board packet, so hopefully everyone had a chance to review them. If there are any additions or corrections, I would want to hear that. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. I will mention on page three, just a minor Scrivener's error about halfway down, just to correct the spelling of my last name to Haggen with no S on the end. Any other corrections or additions?
Mr. Chair, just, I don't know if, I don't have my packet with me. I know it's in the computer in front of us, but there was, there was a representation about, remember Dana relative to the attendance, I think? And I was wondering why, if we didn't have the meeting and, you know, there was no role taken, why she should be pulled out from everybody else and shown as, as not being in attendance? If I've got that right, I think there was, there was an issue there that... Thank you for sharing your packet with me. Dana was shown as being absent, but there was a, oh man, I wish I had my packet. Maybe I can correct it next time during our meeting and go back to it. I don't have, I had a note on mine as to what specifically was my, my concern there, but...
Would it, would it affect the approval of the minutes for today?
No, not at all, not at all.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, if you want, you can clarify that at the, the next meeting.
I will, thank you.
Okay.
I'll let you know when I figure it out.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
And one clarification, under Declaration of Ex parte Communication, I had declared none on that agenda item as well. That could be updated.
Okay, yeah, so let the record reflect that under item five, for Board Member Burgess, just no, no Declaration of Ex parte Communication. Any other additions, corrections, comments on the, the minutes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Summer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved, excuse me, by Board Member Hyman, seconded by Board Member Fields. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes from the March meeting are approved. We'll now move to the next item on the agenda, which is a report from our Planning Division staff. Ms. Jones Van.
Good afternoon, Board. Angela Van Penning is zoning administrator. We have, have nothing additional information to give you today.
Thank you. That moves to remarks by the chairperson. First, I'd just like to welcome back Board Member Picot from maternity leave. So, we're happy to have you back up here, and I hope you can catch up on some sleep soon. It's been a while since I've been through that, but I do remember the sleepless, sleepless nights in the beginning. But congratulations and welcome back. I also wanted to then just go through the, excuse me, the rules for the procedures today. So, this will outline how the meeting is conducted. Matters before the ZBA are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will then make a presentation, answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation recommendation to the board, and then will answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given an opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant will then have the opportunity for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed. The board will go into executive session for discussion, motion, and a vote. And as a reminder, four votes in the affirmative are required for approval. So that completes my remarks, and we'll now move to ex parte communication from each of the board members here. I will start on the left with Board Member Chambers.
As a matter of, as a matter of case number 3435, I did have ex parte communications. I attended a party with the applicant, and basically, it was just a basic conversation to say that he was coming back, and he was having some of his question days, or that's about all that was. In a matter of case number 3436, I have not had...
Ex parte communications. And in a matter of 3437, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions.
And then please also just state the last sentence that you requested.
Oh, I'm sorry. I requested all these disclosures and written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Board Member Burgess?
As to all matters before us here today, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Hyman?
Thank you. As to matter 3435, item on the agenda, I have had an ex parte communication with lawyer Perry, Marty Perry, who indicated that he's representing the, the petitioner. Other than that, I have not had or received any written communications, I have not, have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a, a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Picot?
As to matter case number 3435, 3436, and 3437, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And Board Member Fields?
As to matter of case number 3435, 3436, and 3437, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not had, received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be a part of the record.
Thank you. And for my disclosure, as to case numbers 3435, 3436, and 3437, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. At this point, now we'll go into the actual public hearing, and start off with the swearing of the speakers. Anyone here in the chambers who wishes to testify on any of the cases in front of us, please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after the, or be sworn in by the, the Board Secretary. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is for us to start off with a continued case, which was a matter that was in front of us in the March Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. It is Zoning Board of Appeals case number 3435. And I will ask our Board Secretary to please go ahead and read that item into the record. Zoning Board Case of Appeals Number 3435, a request by Carl Flick for Class B Special Use Permit to obtain a waiver from the requirements of Section 94304E2 of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations for the installation of a fitness spa within the required setback. Location, approximately .18 acre property, is located at 22134th Street, within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kathleen Ward. Thank you very much. We'll start off by asking the applicant to please come forward and provide a presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Marty Perry. I am an attorney, and I am here representing Carl Flick and his wife. I, and by way of further disclosure, I called Mr. Hyman and Mr. Thomas, simply because I've known him for a long time, just to give them the courtesy of letting them know that I'd be involved here today. Other than that, we really didn't discuss any of the issues. Just briefly, I'm here, at first here this morning, simply to introduce Carl Flick, and let him make a presentation to you, and to point out that, with the one exception of Board Member Picot, who was not here for the last hearing, obviously, you all recall that this received an exhaustive review at the last hearing. I've, I've watched the, the video of the entire meeting, read everything, and the issues are fairly straightforward and fairly simple. And having said that, I'm going to let Mr. Flick step forward and address that. You all had a number of questions that you raised at the end of the meeting, that you wanted to have addressed in order to resolve issues. And as, as you noted here, I have this young lady, who's a court reporter, that I brought as just a precaution, because frankly, the vote that was taken at the last time failed on a motion to approve by a three to two vote. And this is just to be extremely careful, just trying to protect my client's interests in this matter. Other than that, I'm going to let Carl go forward and present the facts to you, and I'd like an opportunity, when he finishes, to just speak to you briefly for a minute or two, and then I'd like the opportunity to speak to him rebuttal. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
So, the pointer, does it, I don't think it's working. Okay. My name is Carl Flick. I am a 35-year resident of Northwood Shores, in the same house that we're talking about. My wife and I moved here in 1988. I am an urban planner, a retiring urban planner, with over 40 years' experience. I've worked in two states, Charlotte, North Carolina, and several jurisdictions down here. I'm here before you to answer your questions. Because of Member Picot wasn't here, I'm going to just give a brief update, and then I'm going to focus on the questions that you have with the presentation. I just want to make sure that I can advance this correctly. Okay, what do I push? Oh, there we go, okay. Okay, and I can also use the pointer buttons? No, I can't. Okay, okay, great. Sorry. Okay, the location of our home, it's a single-family home in the Northwood Shores neighborhood, and you can see on the map that it is located near the Intracoastal Waterway on 34th Street and Flagler Drive. The zoning on that is RF7, SF7, seven units per acre, and that's single-family. One thing I want to point out, using the aerial photograph, is that our yard has a lot of mature trees. You can see from the aerial there, the, the leftmost photograph, the emphasis on trees. We've, have shepherded the backyard of our home to be a really special place, and when you come, it's like a, it feels like a botanical garden. So, you'll see pictures, so you won't, you'll be able to also check it out yourself. Just a picture, oops, sorry. Picture of the front of our home. The spa, the swim spa that's proposed is in the side yard setback, and this is a view from the sidewalk, and you're looking back into the side yard. There's a fence blocking the way. The, all of this that's being proposed will be completely hidden. Here's a diagram of the property, and you can see that the proposed location of the swim spa, which is in white, you can see that there is a paver system that goes around the house. I want to give special emphasis to the trees that are there. These are the mature trees that I was talking about. Some of these are in excess of 65 years of age in our neighbor's yard. They're over a century, and that will come into play shortly when I talk about that. But you can also see, we're going to show you emphasis on different, nine areas of the backyard, and we'll talk about that in a moment. The swim spa itself measures roughly, it was 15 feet by, hold on one second, I want to make sure I give you the right numbers. 15 feet by 7.84 feet, and that swim spa will sit on a pad that's eight feet by 16 feet. So that's, when you're looking at, what are we talking about? 16, eight by 16. That is three feet over into the side yard setback. There were a number of concerns that we heard at the last meeting from ZBA board members. They're listed here. For the speed of this presentation, know that I'm going to cover every single one of them. I'm going to answer your questions on every one of them in detail. The first one was actually raised by the, some people in the audience, and that was the issue of precedence. And your attorney, your advising attorney, attorney Sam Thomas, was good about letting you know that that is not an issue, but I wanted to also give you a court case that also reiterates that this is not an issue. And what it says is, this was a court case back in 1998, Jacksonville versus Taylor in Florida, and applicant's variance or special use permit request must be viewed, reviewed on its own merits, rather than on the basis of previously approved variances in the jurisdiction. Previously issued variances or special use permits do not establish controlling precedence or constitute a basis to sustain other applications. So I put this in here, it is not an issue. Yet we do have opposition letters. I'm told as of a half an hour ago that we have, I think there are eight opposition letters, and we'll cover that, but that is the focus of the opposition letters, is precedence, and it's just not an issue. So, there seemed to be some confusion at the last meeting about whether you were looking at a variance or a special use permit. And so I want to make sure that there's just a clarification. We are not, I am not submitting an application for a variance. And a variance, as you know, you're the experts, that, that deals with hardship, and that deals with even potential taking of a property. We are not claiming that at all. What, what we're looking at is a special use permit. And the way to evaluate a special use permit, again, there would seem to be some confusion, and there was even using the vernacular and vocabulary of a variance when the discussion was going on by the ZBA. There was discussion about hardship. And so I'm going to turn that around and apply that to special use permits, because what we're looking here is, what, what we did, my wife and I did, was we geographically evaluated our rear yard. Do we, we, we have a doctor's prescription, this is something for a significant illness, he recommended it, we went to the planning staff. Do we have a chance on this? Is this, this is the initial thing that we asked. Is there, is this any basis of, of being able to successfully get an approval from the ZBA? And the planning staff were very supportive. They had done an initial analysis, and this was over the course of several months. And they said, "Look, you're, you're going to go for a special use permit. You're not being evaluated like a variance. You're being evaluated on whether your use, your spa can overlap three feet into the side yard setback, and we're going to evaluate that using eight standards, waiver standards. That's it. Do you meet those eight standards? If you meet the eight standards, you get an approval." It's not like a variance, where it's a much more complex evaluation. And so I want to make that distinction, because it's what I heard from the audience listening to the discussion, that there seemed to be some confusion. Want to mention again, that when staff did its evaluation, it looked at all eight waiver standards and said, "We comply with all eight standards." And then they made a recommendation for approval. Again, neighborhood support may be thought as important, but if you look at case law, again, my attorney is the expert, evaluating this case on whether it's popular or whether unpopular is not a correct evaluation. It's not one of the eight waiver standards. So I want to make that clear. We did, so there, this particular map that I'm pointing to at the screen, shows in gray the eight waivers, the, I'm sorry, the 500-foot radius. And at the last meeting, we were really pretty unprepared for this, about whether people supported it or not. So in the meantime, in the intervening time, we have amassed 40 letters of support from our surrounding neighbors, and you can see where they're located in, in green. And then you can also see that there, as of yesterday, there were six letters in opposition. As of, I guess, a half an hour ago, there are eight letters. And if you read through the letters that are opposed, opposed to this thing, they are basing their opposition on precedence, and we already covered that. Precedence does not apply to this case. There was a question by one ZBA member that dealt with, would we use this swim spa, which is an exercise spa, for partying? And so the, the answer to that is, first of all, let me advance this, I'm sorry. I think the number of parties that my wife have had at our home in the last 10 years is maybe zero or one. Very few. We're not, we're not real big partiers. But to answer that question, here is a diagram of the swim spa, and it is an exercise device that doesn't put a lot of emphasis on people sitting, so there are only three seats. And the only reason why those seats are there is to put a jet on your muscles. So when you're exercising, you're moving, or if you're not, you've got a crimp, you can sit down, exercise your muscles. But it's, we, we have a small spa in our home that we use to soak like a hot tub. This is not for that purpose. This purpose is to fulfill a health, a health need of mine, so that I am exercising every day, and I need to do that in order to live. Again, to familiar issue, we're about to go through a lot of pictures, and I want to certainly answer many of your questions. One of the members of the ZBA, Mr. Camener, had some questions that deal directly to what I'm about to present. And he was, again, using the language of, is this a self-imposed hardship? Variance language, not really special use language. But I translate that into, are there other areas in your yard where you could put a spa and successfully do this without having a ZBA approval for your special use permit? And so I'm going to take you through it, and we're going to allow you to sit with us the way we did, and with planning staff, to go through the evaluation of our small property. And we'll show you the pictures. What I want to quickly tell you is that, see the trees that are green? Those are the major trees. Their canopies actually extend well beyond what I've done depicted there on the, on the diagram. But our backyard is fully, richly landscaped, as you will see in just a moment. So, and you can see the position of the, the placement of the spa where we're proposing it, which is on the right side, it's in white. The other suggested locations, you'll see four others, I'm going to take you through that. In about, in about 10, 11, 12 slides, you'll see a lot of pictures, and we'll explain why we couldn't choose those spots, because we tried, we really tried. Okay, Zone 1, and you'll see it's now purple. Do you see purple on the far left? That's the western side yard. That western side yard is very narrow, and you can see two pictures from opposite ends of that western side yard. And you can see that it's got the same problem that the current proposed location has, which is a side yard setback. But underneath that side yard are electric, gas, and water lines. And so if we were to choose that side of the yard, we would not meet the waiver standards, the eight waiver standards, we would not meet them. There would be ones that we didn't qualify for, because we put it in an inappropriate place. Okay, Zone 2 of 9 is the, if you look on your monitors or at the screen, you'll see that there's a purple area in the very back of the property, and so we looked at, well, can we put it there? Again, the trees, the mature trees, 65-year-old multi-trunk ficus tree that occupies over half of our rear yard is there. It goes up 45 feet in the air, and above that is power line right, right of way. And so that would be placing the spa, the swim spa, under an active wire. Electrocution is the, the fear on that one. So not a good place to put it. Okay, Zone 3. Zone 3, again, my pointer is not doing its job. I don't even know where I put it here, let's see if I can just get that to work. So it's not working, but if you see the arrows, you'll see that this is the patio in the rear yard. It's surrounded by greenery and trees. Underneath that patio are, is the outfall for the house that goes to the rear lot line. So now I'm going to show you superimposed, we measured out the spa, and we then placed a facsimile spa in the photograph, so you can see it in the next slide. Okay. So the upper right photograph, you'll see that when the spa is, has an east, oops, I'm sorry. I hit that button with my finger. When you have an east-west orientation, the spa blocks the porch, it blocks any egress and ingress in three different locations in that patio area, and you can see them, how tight it is. And it also sits on the root systems of some of the trees. Now we tried a north-south orientation, and we see the same problem. We have access problems to get around that, it's so close to the shed. Well, I even took a photograph lower left of the door open, and you can see superimposed the measurement of the spa, and the door can't open. Can't, it's too, it's too tight. Zone 4, this is the northeast rear of the property. I'm wondering if my cursor can help, yeah, so this is... Yeah, so this is up here. I'm using the cursor to do this. I may need rescuing. Alexis. Did I just do that right? Nothing, other than just un-highlight it. Okay, good. Thank you. So this is where the shed is. The shed has been there for the time, the whole time that we've been there. It's permanently installed. It's not something we can move. And behind it are the trees. You can see how high the trees are, 45 feet. And they go all around that whole corner of that property. If we use that particular piece, we would be faced with the same side yard setback Again, alternate 3, we're looking at an east-west orientation. Same problem that we just described a moment ago. It doesn't fit. Moving on, Zone 5. Same problem, doesn't fit. And again, you can see how tight it is. Okay, we move to a different location. And what we see here is the side yard. You can see the arrows. And this is contiguous to the neighbor that is in full support of our application. And we're also being very respectful of her two-century-old pine trees. And you can see them there in the photograph. Those trees were put in, were planted or whenever, 100 years ago, at least. And to put a spa there would be to put them on their roots. And you know pine trees are very sensitive. Their root systems are very sensitive. So our neighbor, in addition to supporting us in this effort, the contiguous neighbor, thank you, she was very grateful that we didn't put it there. Oh, and if you want to move it over to the house, you can see pictures of the awnings. They don't close if you put the spa next to the house. So it doesn't work there. Zone 7, we're almost done. Just to the north of the spa, yeah, just to the north, there's more of the ficus tree and arica palm. They're also a privacy barrier to the two-story house behind us. So if we were to remove that, we would lose all privacy. It doesn't go there either. And then there is a, you see where the brick paddy, brick pavers are? That's what we're looking at, is could we move the spa over by the house and get out of the side yard setback? And the answer was, we can't for two reasons. One is, you need a two-foot perimeter around the spa in order to maintain it, to have access to it and maintain it. And two, it doesn't fit under the awnings. The awnings don't fit. So it doesn't work there. And then last, this is the area just north of the porch, and you can see views of it. You can also see it on the diagram with the four arrows. Again, that's too close to the wires, the overhead wires that are the utility, the FPNL wires. And it doesn't fit. It also would block the pathway that we have that goes around the yard. So here you have now collectively, in purple, all the areas of the backyard that we uncovered. So instead of looking at it from a variance point of view of a hardship, or of a self-imposed hardship, look at it from a special use permit of, did we do an exhaustive search to answer the question of, can we put this somewhere else and still have this? And the advice we got from planning staff was, yours is a legitimate case for a special use permit. And that's why, when we evaluated it, we said you complied with all eight variables and also recommended approval. Moving on. There was a question about noise. And so what we did was, when we had purchased this swim spa, we purchased it because it was quiet. We're quiet people. My wife is very sensitive to noise. So you can see here the industry standard versus the quietness of this particular model. And how quiet is it? It is as quiet as a conversation, 65 to 66 decibels. We went to the West Palm Beach showroom, Southeast Spas, and we used a decibel meter on it and came up with, when it's fully on, when the motor is running, and when the bubbles are going, it's only 65 to 66 decibels. It's very quiet. It's as quiet as a conversation. And to kind of hit that home, here's a chart showing decibel levels. You can see when you're in green, you're in a safe zone, it's pretty quiet. And when you're in yellow, such as like a motorcycle at 100 decibels, or an airplane taking off, 140, 65 is really low. The neighbor, even our immediate neighbor that gave our endorsement for this, she won't hear it. There was a concern raised by members of the audience about a claim that I made, and I wanted to clarify that, about our property size. So when you look at this diagram, you'll see that our property is marked in red, and it is the same size as most of the properties on our block. But that's not the issue. We all have small lots on this particular block. And so I made the statement that that was one of the things that we were up against. We didn't want to move. We wanted to place this in the property that we have. And was our lot, if you look at the surrounding area, and we used a 500-foot radius, and we measured, and the average for the properties that are in that 500-foot radius is .28. And our property is .18. It's smaller than the surrounding properties. There was a member of the audience that got up and said, "Hey, I can put a pool in my backyard. Why can't he?" His property is .38. Again, our property is .18. We're about, almost half as big. There was a concern about, was this a bona fide medical prescription that was written for me? And without revealing too much about my health situation, my doctor strongly recommended this, as a way to fight what I'm fighting. So it is, it's personal. You know, it's something that's important to me. I can't go to a public pool and put myself at risk because of my immune system. So it's either this or nothing. I've included here, I'm concluding right at this point. Marty's going to, my attorney's going to get up and talk. But I just wanted to show you, and if you want to talk about this, because there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, I've given you some things to refer to in our slideshow. First, these are the eight waiver standards, and shows that we comply with all those, and that staff recommended approval. But if you want to get into any one of those eight standards, let's say you want to talk about it, we provided you slides that show the standard, and then also how we meet it, so that we can bring those up and show you that particular concern that you might have. Same thing here. Same thing here. So this is the quick summary. I'm not going to do that. I've given my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to my attorney, Marty Perry. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it very much.
That pretty much concludes our presentation. The only comment I'd like to make is that your staff has done exhaustive analysis. And I quickly would refer you to pages 3 and 4 of the staff report, which provides a very succinct analysis. Notwithstanding the technical presentation you just sat through, this is a fairly simple, in my opinion, issue here. What he's seeking is an accessory use that's permitted by code. The only problem that he has is that he is into the setback by three feet, the side setback. The question is, does he meet the standards? And there are several standards that are laid out in your code, and your staff report goes through those in great detail in pages following 3 and 4. But the staff has done an exhaustive analysis of the standards in relationship to all the factors and evidence that Mr. Flick has presented. And the reality is, is they have concluded and made a recommendation of approval that he meets all those standards. And that's really the test. And your job as the, as the board here is basically to act in a quasi-judicial manner to determine whether or not competent substantial evidence has been produced that he meets all those standards. Because what he's seeking is a waiver. It doesn't require hardship proof or anything of that nature, just the standards that are laid out. And, and the fact is, is that he meets those standards, and he's entitled to an approval. It's not something that, I, I watched with great, great interest the comments of the board. And the reality is, I couldn't discern whether or not the board was troubled by the ordinance itself or the issues. They struggled with the issue of hardship. There was comments by Mr. Hyman relative to noise, issues of whether more than one person could use this facility at one time. I can tell you, as a competitive swimmer in high school and college, you need six to eight feet for a swim lane. There is no way that two people could swim in this, in this structure, okay, at the same time. They'd be bumping into each other. It just doesn't make any sense. And the fact is, they do have a hot tub. It's in their enclosed patio area, and they don't need this for a hot tub. It's just for exercise, which is based upon a doctor's prescription. So with that, I would request consideration of approval, but obviously you need to hear from the people here to speak for and against. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. We'll go first for the board with any questions for the applicant. I'm going to start with Board Member Fields, please.
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Pecot?
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Hyman, questions for the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
No questions for the applicant.
Okay. And Board Member Chambers?
No questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions for the applicant at this time. So we'll go ahead now and move to the staff presentation.
Alexis Singlier, planning for the record. I just want to clarify a couple of things first. So Mr. Flick, the applicant, he's requesting Class B special use permit to allow him to obtain the waiver, just so we know. I feel like there was confusion with how he worded it, so I just wanted that to be known for you guys first. And the waiver is for three feet. And then this is just an updated list of all the support letters I received and all the opposition letters I received. I did receive 39 supports and nine oppositions, which you guys have on record. And then the star one is Elizabeth that I mentioned last ZBA meeting, who is the neighbor most affected by the waiver. And then these are all the standards that we are voting on today, the general specific standards, the residential, district standard, additional standards, and waiver standards. Staff is still recommending approval with conditions for this, that, that the property owner maintains the upkeep of the existing fence and landscaping to ultimately reduce and back to the neighbor to the east. Any comments regarding?
That concludes staff's presentation. Okay, I'll start off with Board Member Pecot with any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Hyman?
No questions.
Board Member Burgess?
Just one question on the east side, the location closest to the swim, proposed location, the swim spa. I think I saw from an aerial, is that current location a driveway location immediately adjacent to that?
For that neighbor itself, Elizabeth's side, yes, that is her driveway.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Board Member Chambers?
No questions for staff.
Board Member Fields?
No question, thank you.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions, and thank you, Alexis, for the presentation. First of all, and as you stated at the very beginning, a little bit regarding the distinction between the waiver and special use permit, and I was wondering if, if you or other planning staff can explain why those, why there are two separate items, why there's both a waiver and a special use permit in front of us, and also maybe the distinction, again, between the waiver and the variance? Because I think that may be useful for the board and also the audience.
So first, I'll go from why we decided to determine this as a Class B special use permit, which normally you would see as a swimming pool. So because this is our definitions of a swimming pool, so because this fitness spa is over the 18 inches in depth, that's how we came up with the determination, because, because technically this wouldn't be considered a swimming pool. It is a hot tub. But since it does define in this code of swimming pools as being 18 inches in depth, that's how it was determined that is a Class B special use permit and not a variance. And then for, regarding your question regarding the Class B special use permit in the waiver, that is just, let me try that. What? Yes, please.
Angela Jones, planning and zoning administrator. The way our zoning code is done today, we have, you know, it's a permitted use table, which outlines all 180 uses that are allowed in the code. Swimming pools, I'll take that back, swimming pools are actually located in sections we have uses that are permitted. So if you can meet certain requirements, you can go. Like Lexi said, this swimming pool was deemed, based on definition, to be a Class B special use permit. Class B special use permit, as she showed by the standards, have different standards to it. And also in their Article 9, it alludes to waivers. So you have certain requirements that you have to meet as part of the Class B special use permit. Setbacks, location, I guess, for swimming pools. So if you don't meet those setbacks, because it's a Class B, it goes into that section for waivers. It's not a variance, it's waivers. And that's, I'm not sure what the standard it is for that, but those are your waiver requirements. Because how we look at it in that permitted use table, and in Article, it's Article 10, and how we do for swimming pools, so it's a Class B special use permit, certain requirements. If you can't meet a requirement, you have to do a waivers. And waivers are those standards that, one of the requirements that Lexi put up on the screen. So that's why it's a Class B with waivers and not a Class B with a variance.
Thank you. And one other question, and I don't know if it would be either you or the board attorney, but there, there were comments made in the applicant's presentation regarding precedent, and so certain representations that were made. And I did want to understand from, from the city staff's side, and again, maybe it's a legal question, just further clarification regarding whether the action taken today, how that relates to precedent or not.
Mr. Chairmembers, you could not grant or deny this application based on an action you may have taken in the past. You must make a decision on this application based upon whether or not it meets all of the required standards. If it does, without regards to action you've taken in the past, it must be approved. If it doesn't, without regards to any action you've taken in the past, it would be denied. So you have to base your decision on evidence presented today, competent substantial, at this hearing, based on whether or not it meets the standards of the code without regards to what we call precedents.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I think we're done with questions for staff, so I'll open the public hearing. I do have some cards, so I'll start off with those. When I read your name, please come forward to speak at the podium. The first name is Bradley Garvin. And when you do come forward, please state your name and address for the record and indicate whether or not you were sworn in.
Whether or not I'm what?
Whether or not you were sworn in.
Yes, my name is Brad Garvin. I live at 23634th Street, and I was sworn in. So I would like to note that my home is within 500 feet range of this waiver request. I should also note that I didn't receive any official notification that this hearing was happening today, either by email or by mail. I'm very concerned by that, given that I registered my objection last time. I'm only here because my neighbors told me, so I don't like that this has been swept under the rug. Having said that, I have not heard any legitimate reason as to why someone's lot that's too small should authorize a special exception or a waiver. Quite frankly, I'm looking at those code references, and I have the ordinance reference in front of me here. And the one that applies is 94305 setbacks. It was not reviewed to that standard, or at least it's not up there. So that's very concerning also. I would also like to point out that this applicant has no issue lying under oath. He said his lot was under 6,000 square feet last time, and it was documented as such. And here we have today, I mean, we don't know what he's saying is true. So my point is, the little lecture he gave you about how to interpret the legal analysis of this, you need to disregard it completely. He's not a lawyer, and he's not an adjudicator. There is no entitlement to give someone a place for their hot tub just because they don't have room for it. And I'll point out that that photograph on there, he's already poured the pad. He's very- point out that that photograph on there, he's already poured the pad. He's very presumptuous that he's going to get this passed today. Or why would he spend all that money on all those new pavers and to pour that pad? This... And you know, this bit about the noise, did, did, did he analyze how much noise is made by twelve people sitting on the side of that hot tub having a party? We're not saying twelve people are going to be swimming. That's ridiculous. Long after he's gone, there's going to be people sitting up there forever. We want you to enforce the ordinances, and we, we don't see any reason that you have to explain to staff why you say no. The rules are the rules. And I can tell you something else. If this passes, it's not that there's a precedent that, oh, well, this was passed before. There will, you can, there'll be hundreds of applicants who know they can get through this process with you guys. And you're going to inundate yourself with people trying to beat these five-foot setbacks, which are really nothing. Five feet is nothing, if you look around the neighborhood. So I, I would really like you to vote against this, and based, especially on the fact that they never reviewed the applicable standard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Michael Moncrief. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Moncrief. I live at three-twenty-one Thirty-Fourth Street, and I have been sworn in. I want to go on record being opposed to this. I, I believe the City of West Palm Beach has done their homework and put setbacks on our property lines for a very good reason, and I think we need to pay attention to that. As well, Mr. Burgess had brought up the trees, and Carl brought it up extensively. I'm equally as concerned about the trees, and if the weight of this tub is very close to the one's tree, as you can see in the diagram, perhaps we should do a study on the impact of the roots before we allow it to make sure that we aren't killing these incredibly valuable forty-five-feet-high trees. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Diamond.
I'm Scott Diamond. I live at thirty-four-ten North Flagler Drive, which I believe is within five hundred feet. I also own several other homes in the area, including thirty-four-fifteen, which is on Thirty-Fourth Street, and will own two more homes on Thirty-Fourth Street. It would seem to me that a five-foot setback is, is not a really high hurdle to overcome by not putting something within the five-foot setback. I know that Carl was able to get his neighbor to sign off on this, but maybe one day they'll sell the house, and the people that buy the new house won't actually be happy with having a swimming pool or a swimming structure within that five-foot setback. It would also seem to me that if there's no hurdle at all to overcome for this special use permit, because I can't understand, based on what those facts were, that this would be a, a really big jumping off point to be able to put something within your five-foot setback, then can't we all just put something within that by just filing for a special use permit? So I'm opposed to it, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Next is Brian McCarthy. Please come forward.
I'm Brian McCarthy, two-fourteen Thirty-Fourth Street. I've been there for well over three decades. I'm diagonally across the street from Carl and his wife. I've known them all that time that they've been there, and they've always been very friendly, quiet neighbors, never a problem. And I'm for, I have no objection to having them put in the spa. One of the things about the spa is that it's not a spa. It's called a swim spa, and that is classified as a therapeutic spa. It's not just for fun. Some of the emails that went around made it seem like that he's just putting in a rather big, large spa, when in actuality, his is classified also as a medium size. The other thing is, the big objection on the emails, of course, was what's already been addressed, and that was that it would set an awful precedent, and that, of course, that is no longer an issue. They're saying that it wouldn't do that. And if that's the case, I'm just thinking that anybody who has an objection would rethink the position on it, since it really wouldn't create a problem, since it wouldn't be a long-range issue, that they would allow this to go through so that at least somebody can, A, get exercise that would benefit him, and also be able to enjoy his backyard that much more. Thank you.
Thank you. The next cards, I believe, are all people who filed cards but did not wish to come forward and speak, so I'll just read them into the record. Or actually, I'll take that at the end. First is Olga Soto at thirty-five-hundred, I believe, thirty-five-hundred, North Flagler Drive, says, do not wish to speak, but please do not set a precedent for this. The next card is from Lon Sabella at twenty-nine-eleven North Flagler Drive. Does not wish to speak, but stated for the record, I am in opposition, as I believe it would cause an irreversible negative precedent for Northwood Shores. The next card is from Betty Ann Starkey, two-thirteen Twenty-Ninth Street. It says, I do not wish to speak, but for the record, says, I've known Carl Flick over twenty-five years, is as an outstanding neighbor, honest, plays by the book, treats others with respect. I think his request for approval should be granted, not encroaching on any neighbors. And the final card that I have is from Sumner Carey. You wish, sorry, Sumner Carey, you wish to speak? Please come forward.
Yes, two-zero-eight Thirty-Fourth Street, West Palm Beach, Florida. I want to speak against Mr. Flick for a lot of reasons. One reason is, he is no expert in either law or in the job that he talks about, that he was a planning director fired from the Palm Beach County Board for just because of egregious behavior. He's insidious, he's egregious, and he's not a good person. Secondly, we have a...
Yeah, to the matter at hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Okay. I got hurt in Vietnam, so I can't speak too good, I can't see too good. And that's a hardship, not what he's talking about, getting drafted for that thing. This Public Utilities drops the children off on the corner of where Flick lives. Those children come back to go to their school, and this, these are very intelligent young kids, walking past Mr. Flick's house. If he comes out of that house, or that little thing, whatever he's talking about, which is ridiculous, children could see him in nudity. And I hate to bring that up, but it's true, because he was painting women. He was nude, he had flags around the women. I don't trust his character with the children on our corner. I don't trust him as a person. He's done some insidious things to the homes of where we live. He's not of good quality character. His issue of his back is something he's made up. He hasn't produced anything. He's not an expert on anything. He's just a guy trying to fool his round through the system so he can get this, this issue. No veteran on that street, Thirty-Fourth Street, Thirty-Fifth Street, Twenty-Eighth Street, would ever dare come to you, gentlemen, and ask for a special exception, a variance, a waiver. It's all nonsense. Thank you very much.
Okay. That was the last card that I had. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak regarding this matter? If not, I'll check with staff to see if there are any voicemails or other pieces of correspondence that need to be read into the record.
I just want to clarify that from Bradley's first comment regarding the mailers, I personally was responsible for sending them out. I checked three times. You can ask Rick and Angela that I made sure all mailers were accounted for. All correct mailers went out. And then regarding the section, the section is up there. It's ninety-four-three-oh-four E-two. That's where you would see the setbacks.
That's not true. It's ninety-four-three-oh-five. I have it right in front of me. I got it right here.
Okay, we'll, we'll pause if there needs to be further clarification, if, if that needs to be checked. But thanks for verifying regarding the, the advertising. So are there, is there anyone else in the chambers who wishes to speak?
Actually, I'm waiting.
Okay, please come.
My, my card certainly needs to be sworn in. I, I am sworn in.
Okay, speak, yeah, once you get to the microphone.
My name is Lon Sabella. I'm at twenty-nine-eleven North Flagler Drive. Yes, I was here and sworn in. I would just like to argue the fact that it does not set precedent. That's opinion. When you do anything that is not automatically approved, it sets a precedent. And I would beg to differ from anyone. That's his opinion? And he talked to a few people, and the staff said that? The people and staff that are on his side are the attorneys, that they know what a precedent actually is? I just want to make it for the record that I dispute the argument that it doesn't set a precedent. Anything that is a special exception, or whatever you want to call it, sets a precedent. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And if, what we'll do is have the applicant go ahead and make a rebuttal. I did want staff just to, again, clarify regarding this section of the code, but if you want to double-check that, need, need any time, we'll just have the applicant make their rebuttal, and then we'll, we can address that at that time.
Thank you. Marty Perry again. I just, I'm going to be very brief. I mean, the reality is, is that, as I said before, this is a fairly simple, straightforward request. But for the fact that there is a setback issue here, this would be an approved use. This, it's already been stated by staff, it's covered clearly in the staff report, that this is an accessory use that's approved, okay? There's, there's plenty of these that have occurred in this type of neighborhood throughout the city. The reality is, is that in order to get the setback waiver, which is requested, okay, you need to be able to meet all the standards set forth in the code. If you meet those standards, then you're entitled to the approval. And the reality is, is that this board has, your job, and I don't want to tell you what the law is, Sam could do that himself. But the reality is, your job is discern whether or not there's been competent substantial evidence proving that he meets all those standards. And the most competent substantial evidence before you, and this has been, there are plenty of court cases on this issue, your staff, clearly, their opinion is competent substantial evidence. The applicant himself is, is a professional planner of some forty years. When I first met Carl, and the only reason I'm here today is I met Carl forty years ago, he was a planner for the Palm Beach County Planning Division. I, I know what his experience is. He goes into maybe too much detail, but he's given you a great deal of detail. But he also did that with the city. He went through this thoroughly. They spent a lot of time on this, discerning whether or not he, he had any other alternative sites on his site that he could place this, that so that he, he would, wouldn't need the waiver, wouldn't need anything. The reality is, is they discerned this is the only viable place to put it. Does he impact anyone? His, his only real neighbor is next door, and she's not objecting. In fact, she agrees it's not a problem. She's further away than most of the other neighbors. She has three lots, not one lot, okay? So the distant separation is, is significant between him and the impact that he would have on her. From a noise standpoint, the noise issue is irrelevant, because this is conversation. That's all we're talking about. There was concern about, well, if one gentleman got up here and said, well, potential exposure of nudity to neighborhood children. Well, what nudity? I mean, I, I assume that they're going to wear bathing suits. I've never heard any testimony that the Flicks themselves are party animals or anything of that nature that they're going to create problems. They're simply looking for exercise here. That's all this is, is an exercise pool. It's not a spa. It's not a hot tub. It's an exercise pool, and that needs to be kept in mind. So the only issue really is that three feet, and whether or not they meet all the requirements of the ordinance. And I suggest that the only competent evidence that's been submitted is that they do meet it, okay? There have been concerns and opinions expressed that are not like it. If you don't like the ordinance, then attack the ordinance. Go to the city commission and say, we need to change this ordinance. Let's not allow setback variances. Let's not allow waivers. Let's not allow that to happen. But that's not the case. If you meet the standards, you're entitled to an approval. With that, I could conclude my remarks. I suggest to you that the appropriate decision here today is approval. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Now, now we'll move on to executive session from the board. So I'm going to start off with Board Member Hyman, please.
I have no comments at this time, Chairman.
Board Member Burgess, any comments for executive session?
Yes, I think a couple of the questions from the last meeting were more thoroughly explained today, and I'll just point out some of the concerns I had from the last time, and that was the sensitivity to the tree roots from the neighboring properties, but also the properties on site, the trees on site. And another one was the sound, and then ultimately, was there, was there an alternative location that would fit with inside the setback? And so I believe the applicant's presentation and staff's presentation today addressed all of those questions that I had related to the acoustics along that property line. Not only is it, you know, declared to be conversation level, the adjacent neighbor to the east has a driveway further separating and buffering the existing outdoor uses of that property from this location. The fact that the swim spa is now above ground instead of buried in-ground significantly improves the tree root conditions, in my opinion, and the added noise that that may cause spilling over the property line we just talked about from the, from the buffer standpoint. And so in the walkthrough of the alternative locations, I understand the reasons why, you know, those other locations were not the preferred location. And if you look at moving the swim spa in its current proposed location further west to alleviate the setback any further, then you're creating additional issues of water right up against an existing building foundation. So I believe the setback is therefore warranted to be closer in the proposed location, and I appreciate the thorough explanation today.
Okay. Member Chambers?
I don't have any questions to add. I'd just like to say, I think the presentation was in detail and gave us a lot of explanations since the last meeting. I think it clarified a lot of things, so thank you.
Board Member Fields?
I too agree that, that the questions that I have were answered as far as the conflicting testimony as to the neighbor's position in the last meeting, whether she was for or against it, and I think that has been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. And Board Member Pecot?
Just that, I wanted to thank the applicant for catching me up to speed since I wasn't here last meeting, and for the thorough presentation so I could be caught up. Thank you.
Okay. And I have no, nothing further to add to the discussion here in the executive session. I, there were several questions last time, but I believe that we, we have gotten into those questions and answers today, so that provides additional light on making the decision today. At this time, I'll open up if there are any final comments or questions here in executive session. Actually, sorry, I did want to ask staff, there was a question about the code section for the additional standards that we cited, section ninety-four-dash-three-oh-four. I wanted to verify that was, was correct.
Yes, what I said originally was correct. Angela also checked it.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, again, any other final comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. And, sorry, with, with respect to the motion, recall that there are actually two items before us, which are the waiver and the special exception. We will have to take separate motions and separate votes on each of those.
Can you clarify who's, who's participating in the act of voting today, please?
Yes, yeah. So we do have six members up here, so, Mr. Chambers will serve as an alternate. He's not a voting member for this item. So, again, so the remaining five will be, will be voting members on this item.
I note that the zoning board of appeals grant the waiver for zoning boards of appeals case number four, thirty-four, thirty-five, as listed in the staff report dated April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff's report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that all the applicant's criteria in section ninety-four-dash-two-seven-three-A-two of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Burgess. I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the motion for approving the waiver passes five to zero. Next item related to this is the, is the matter of the Class B special use permit. I did want to make note that staff recommended if this were to be proposed, that there is one condition of approval that is recommended by staff. So we may want to take a look at that and determine whether or not that's... that and determine whether or not that's appropriate to include, and whether or not there are any other conditions that are appropriate to include. But again, I'll entertain discussion or a motion on this item.
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant zoning board of appeals case number thirty-four, thirty-five, a request by Carl Flick for a Class B special use permit to construct an accessory fitness spa within a required side yard setback of the property located at two-two-one Thirty-Fourth Street. This motion is based upon testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted, and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the applicable criterias in Section ninety-four dash three-six E three through five, and Sections ninety-four dash three-zero-four E two of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the Class B special use permit is subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff's report dated April twenty-fourth, twenty-two thousand and twenty-four. I move these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations, and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the item has been moved by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Hyman. I would like to open it up for discussion. I should have done that prior to the last, in case there was any discussion on the prior motion, but I did want to look at the language in the condition, and I would propose, the way the condition currently reads is it says, "Property owners must maintain and the upkeep of the existing fence and landscaping to ultimately reduce the impact of the neighboring property located at the east." I believe there was testimony last time that indicated possibly that the fence might be being replaced, and the language in here speaks to the existing fence.
For the record, the applicant will comply with that condition.
Okay, yeah, and I did want to verify that. Could you clarify, sorry, Mr. Perry, could you clarify whether or not the fence is remaining or whether it's being replaced?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
There's the fence, the existing fence that's there, whether it's going to remain in place or be replaced?
He has a permit to replace that fence with a new fence, as he described last time. I think it's a better fence than what he had, better aesthetically.
Okay, yeah, my recollection was that there was testimony last time that the fence would be replaced, and even if it were not, it could be replaced in the future. My suggestion would be that if this were to move forward, we would maybe modify the condition to say, "Property owner must maintain the presence of a six-foot opaque fence and landscaping to ultimately reduce the impact of the neighboring property located at the east." So we clarified that it's not necessarily the existing fence, but that there would always be in place a six-foot-high fence, and that it would be opaque, so that it would not be replaced.
That's acceptable language.
Okay.
I accept that language as a fairly amiable.
Second accepts that as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think "of" in that sentence should probably be "on" as well.
I'm sorry, "on" going where?
Reduce the impact on the neighboring property as opposed to "of" the neighboring property.
Okay, yes, reduce the impact on the neighboring property located at the east, yes. So from the maker of the motion and the seconder, those are accepted, okay. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Okay, with that, we'll ask the Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Haggen?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you for your time, attention, and decision.
How did we appeal this?
You can, if there are concerns, this can be discussed with staff regarding the process. We need to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is going to be case number thirty-four, thirty-six. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A zoning request by Anthony A. Harrington of Design Methods Architecture on behalf of Gregory Eric Queen and Laura Lambert Queen for a five-foot variance from Section ninety-four seven-two-A two-A of the City's zoning and land development regulations for the enclosure of a carport within the front setback. Location, approximately point-two-seven acres, is generally located at three-hundred Palmetto Street, within Commissioner District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Okay, thank you. We'll first ask the applicant to state name and address for the record, and provide us with a presentation.
Good afternoon, my name's Anthony Harrington, architect of record for my client at three-hundred Palmetto Street, Greg Queen. As stated ahead, we're looking for case number three-four-three-six, a variance. Let me move on, I might as well read through it. The zoning board of appeals, we request a variance of five feet in the front setback just over the garage. The current owner, who's owned the house for five years, has very low depth, sixteen feet, in the carport, so they can get the cars in there a little bit, but they can never secure them or create a garage to make it work. So the idea is that we would bring the front garage property out, five feet, to allow for the full enclosure for garage. While we're doing that, we're going to attach a little section of it so that we can have a covered entry, and that would allow us a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet of addition, pushing from a twenty-five-foot front setback to twenty-foot setback. I would make a side note that this part of Palmetto Street is unusually wide, it's a sixty-foot right-of-way. As you cross Olive on the east side, it becomes a very narrow street, so the impact across the street and the neighbors feels less significant. This is the location, three-hundred, right on the corner, southwest corner of Olive and Palmetto. The idea is to utilize this section, right where the carport is, and build it forward a little bit. Obviously, with that lower existing roof that's shown in the bottom right here, it's already three feet out into the setback, and it's what we'll call leaning roof, so the idea of continuing that pitch would be problematic. So the idea was, in this drawing to the left, was to create this simple gable structure that reflects on both sides of the house, is, you know, within the architectural style. And this profile from the side gives you the idea of that overhang that's probably four feet out already. A little sketch here, just to help the client see the idea of why I thought you might as well go forward and create a little coverage for the front entry at the same time. The justification is the garage cannot be easily built anywhere else on the property. The depth of the existing carport does not allow a garage, as it means properly secure the car. The necessity of the variance is not a result of the action of the owners, as the property was purchased with the existing shallow carport. Granted, the variance is in harmony with the neighbor. As you can see, even, you know, the next-door neighbor has that same condition, while possibly or most likely inside the setback, but the alignment would match. In conclusion, the variance request complies with all the standards for code compliance. We've reviewed it thoroughly with staff, and they've approved it. There's not another location as stated, and the request for the variance is made for the carport five feet in order to construct a neighborhood garage for safe and secure storage of the homeowner's vehicles, and again, is only one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, not the full length of the front of the house. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open it up to questions from our board. I'll start off with Board Member Burgess. Any questions of the applicant?
No questions for the applicant, thank you.
Okay, Member Chambers?
No questions for the applicant.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
No questions.
Board Member Pecot?
No questions.
Board Member Hyman?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, I have no questions either. Okay, thank you. Well, sorry, now ask staff to come forward and make a presentation.
All right, good afternoon, board members and everyone. Eric Cologne, Associate Planner for the record here. Today I'm presenting ZBA case thirty-four, thirty-six, a front setback variance for the enclosure of an existing carport. The subject property is eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight square feet, located in a single-family low-density zoning designation, and is surrounded by residential uses on all sides. The request is by Anthony Harrington, on behalf of the homeowners Eric and Laura Queen, for the five-foot variance from Section ninety-four dash seventy-two-A two-A from the zoning and land development regulations within the front setbacks, to allow the closure of a carport. Required is twenty-five feet, proposed is twenty feet, and the requested is five feet. So here you can see the survey and the existing conditions. On the left is the existing property. The structure was built in nineteen-sixty-three, already encroaching two inches into the twenty-five-foot setback, making it a legal non-conforming structure. As the property already encroaches, a variance would be required to enclose the carport as there would not be sufficient space to enclose it without already encroaching into that twenty-five-foot setback. On the left, you'll see, all right, sight video. So on the left, you see South Olive Road. The video seems to not be playing, but it shows the existing conditions in the neighborhood. It just shows the existing street, the applicant house, and then the house next door on Palmetto You can see some site photos here. Note the existing landscape vegetation screening and fence on the left picture, facing the nearest property to the west, minimizing the site impact from the property to the side. Then on the right, you can see the existing carport as it is. You can see the car is already protruding out of the existing carport. Per the proposed site plan, the new setback will be twenty foot after enclosing the carport. The garage will follow the same building line as the existing structure, keeping the existing side setback of seven feet. In addition, it is the most logical location as an extension of the existing carport. Then here you can see the proposed elevations indicating that the garage meets all height requirements, and the design's going to be in harmony with the existing structure. Therefore, staff is recommending approval based on the variance standards found in Section ninety-four, thirty-eight, D six from the City's zoning regulations, with the variance only applying to the proposed enclosed carports. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask if the board has any questions of staff, so I'll start with Board Member Chambers.
Can you go back about four slides?
Sure.
Just put two more. That one back, one forward. What is that, is that just a cropped picture that I'm seeing from both angles? Is that what it is?
Yeah, it was the formatting in the PowerPoint.
There's another driveway.
No, there's only one driveway on the site, yeah.
It's two pictures.
Okay.
Yes, there is only one driveway on the site.
That's what I figured out when I seen it on the clarify.
Okay, any other questions of staff? You good? Good. We'll go to Board Member Fields.
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Pecot?
No questions.
Board Member Hyman?
No questions.
Board Member Burgess?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions of staff, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll start off by opening the public hearing for anyone wishing to make comments or questions on this application. If you're here to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Greg Queen, and I'm the homeowner, and just, if it matters to anyone, the house directly to my east, and the three that are directly across from me, I have letters of support from all of them, so all of my closest neighbors that can actually see the garage are okay with it.
Okay, yeah, if you do have letters that you'd like to enter into the record, please, you can hand them to our Board Secretary. Okay, are there any other members here present who wish, any other people present who wish to speak regarding this item? I'll ask staff if we received any voicemails, emails, or any other forms of communication that need to be entered into the record.
No voicemails, emails, or any other forms of communication.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move into executive session. So I'll start off with Board Member Fields' comments for executive session.
No comments.
Okay, Board Member Pecot?
No comments.
Board Member Hyman?
No comments.
Board Member Burgess?
Just a quick comment, acknowledging that the twenty-foot in front of the proposed garage extent would still allow for a full-size vehicle as it would comply with the minimum, you know, distance of a parking space. So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that we would still be able to park a car outside of that, and that's not limiting that ability to do that by enclosing what's there, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And then, Board Member Chambers?
No comments at this time.
Okay, I have no comments either on this. I will ask the applicant, there was a condition that was recommended to just confirm whether or not you're aware of the condition that was recommended by staff, and that you are in agreement with that condition.
Just at the front setback only applied to the proposed carport.
We agree.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number thirty-four, thirty-six, a request by Anthony A. Harrington of Design Methods Architects on behalf of Gregory Eric Queen and Laura Lambert Queen for a variance from Section ninety-four dash seventy-two-A two-A of the City's zoning and land development regulations for the enclosure of a carport within the front setback. The motion is based on the testimony presented, along with the application submitted in staff report, which constitute competent and substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in Article Two, Section ninety-four dash thirty-eight, D six, of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations, and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, the front setback variance shall only apply to the proposed enclosed carport.
Okay, the motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Board Member Burgess and seconded by Board Member Hyman. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Haggen?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is approved, five to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, our last item in front of us today is zoning board of appeals case number thirty-four, thirty-seven. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Raymond DeLing for variances from Section ninety-four seven-seven-A two of the City's zoning and land development regulations for construction of a new single-family residence. Location, the subject property consisting of point-six acres is located at Twenty-Second Street, within Commissioner District Number One, Commissioner Kathleen Lord.
Thank you. I'll first start and ask if the applicant has a presentation to provide for us today.
He doesn't have an application, but he can speak a few words. His English is not too extensive, but I can definitely translate for him. He speaks Haitian Creole.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, I'll open it up to the applicant, and ask him to state your name and address for the record, and also if you've been sworn in.
My name is Raymond DeLing. My address is one-four-eight-nine Event Street, River Beach.
You have been sworn in.
Perfect, he was sworn in at the beginning, yes, perfect, thank you. And yes, if you have anything you'd like to say to the board, feel free to...
Yeah, I'm needing both of my kids for they help me, for they try, they have built my home place, and my kids, I try for they help me, I don't know. My English is not good.
Yeah, understood. And I imagine staff will also probably give us, you know, some initial background in their presentation. I'll ask the board if you'd like to ask any questions of the applicant, otherwise, again, we'll get some more information from the staff presentation. So I'll start off with Board Member Fields, any questions of the applicant?
No question.
Okay, Board Member Pecot?
No questions.
Board Member Hyman?
No questions.
Board Member Burgess?
No questions.
Board Member Chambers?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions of the applicant, so we'll have staff now make a presentation.
Good evening, board members, everyone, and Volsey Platter for the record. Today I'll be presenting ZBA case number thirty-four, thirty-seven, for a variance at Twenty-Second Street. So the subject property is point-zero-six acres, the zoning is Coleman Park Single Family, S.F. eleven. It is at the terminus of Twenty-Second Street, west of the FEC Railway. The request is by Raymond DeLing.
The request is by Raymond Deligne for a variance from section ninety-four dash two-two-three of the city's zoning and land development regulations for the construction of a single-family residence. So, the variance request includes two variances, um, five feet both in the front and five feet on the side setback on the west side of the property. So, next I have some site photos, which shows the vacant lot of record next to the FEC Railway. So, the survey here shows the, um, lot that is significantly smaller than the standard lots which are developable within the city. There was an FEC Railway taking, which reduced the frontage and the overall width of the lot, and this is also a lot of record, and per section ninety-four dash five-one-three, any lot of record which is not in conformance with the current dimensional and/or area standards of the zoning and land development regulations may be built upon. So, here I have a diagram which shows the Coleman Park SF-eleven setback requirements, um, and orange would be what they would be permitted to build on, should they choose, and it's very limited, since the front setback is twenty-five, the rear setback is ten feet, and a minimum of five and max of fifteen, so five minimum, fifteen total. And on the right-hand side shows the site plan, which is what they're proposing, and, um, the outline pretty much shows what they would, the area in which the footprint of the building would be able to occupy, should they have followed the Coleman Park requirements. So, here's an enlarged, um, site plan. The applicant and architect have explored multiple alternatives, and this is the one that yielded the least amount of variances. Here is the proposed elevation, it is, um, one-story, and staff recommends approval with the condition that the front setback variance shall only apply to the proposed single-family residence, as we find that it meets all of the variance standards found in section ninety-four dash thirty-eight, D-six of the city of West Palm Beach Planning and Zoning, um, Land Development Regulations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll ask the board if you've got any questions for staff. I'll start off with Board Member Picot, any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Hyman?
Uh, just one, um, do you know if this is, uh, being built as a spec house, or is it, uh, is it for the applicant?
It's for the applicant, he owns it, and he will live in it.
Building it for, as his own home?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Board Member Burgess?
No questions for staff, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Chambers?
No questions for staff.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
Uh, just one question, you specifically put in the language here as a condition, the, for the front setback vari- the variance shall only apply to proposed single-family residence. Can you run a little bit more depth while we're adding that language in?
So, because in case, for example, they decide to expand that footprint, then it would only be for what is presented today, they would have to come back, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I had a question along those lines, uh, because, uh, this one, the, the last case we had had a similar condition, uh, and there, they were only seeking the front setback variance. Here, they're seeking a side setback and a front setback.
Correct.
Um, so I was wondering why the, um, language only says the front setback variance, but not the side?
It should include both.
Okay.
It would be the setback variance.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, when we...
We'd strike "front."
We can strike the word "front," okay, okay, perfect. Um, okay, no other questions of...
I actually had one. Um, so there is no on-site parking requirement for, um, this, or is it satisfied with on, um, with the on-street parking and the avail- there's not a requirement for parking on the site?
No, but they would still meet it, should they choose. Because right now, we're only looking at the variance for the structure itself at permitting, should it be required, that would be a comment that we make.
Understood, thank you. Okay, um, if there are no other questions of staff, uh, then we'll go ahead and move to public hearing. So, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to speak on this item, I don't have any cards, but if you are wishing to speak on this item and are present, please come forward. Okay, um, I'll ask staff, uh, if we have any emails or voicemails or anything else that needs to be entered into the record.
No, but there was someone who was present today, and she just received a mail or she had questions about it. I explained that outside, um, during the previous minutes, and, yeah, she's, she's good now.
Okay, okay. Uh, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, we'll move to executive session. Uh, I'll start off with, uh, Board Member Hyman.
Um, I'm just glad to see some use being made of these small parcels that are, that are out there. I think we've seen a couple of these, and, uh, um, you know, it's filling a void, and, um, I'm happy we're looking at these things positively.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
Agreed, I wish the architect was here, we can applaud the creativity of fitting such a layout on a site like this, so, uh, kudos for, uh, such a great info, um, you know, effort here.
Thank you.
Uh, Member Chambers?
No comments.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
I agree with the comments made earlier about the use of this particular odd-shaped lot, um, no comments.
Yep, and Board Member Picot?
No comments.
Okay, um, and I'll just add to that, that, uh, this looks like quite the design challenge, and, uh, would also, uh, provide my, uh, kudos to, uh, to the architect for, uh, minimizing the variances and still making something usable out of it, because it certainly, with the, uh, the right-of-way taking that occurred over the years, made this a, uh, extremely challenging, uh, property to build on. Uh, with that, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
Have a question.
Mr. Chairman, um, I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number thirty-four, thirty-seven, a request by Raymond Deligne for variances from section ninety-four dash twenty-two-twenty-three-C of the city's zoning and land development regulations for the construction of a new single-family residence within the required front and side setbacks specifically relating to the minimum property development regulations in the zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent, substantial evidence. The board hereby makes the finding of fact that each of the criteria in Article Two, Section ninety-four, thirty-eight, D-six of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. Do we have the conditions that should be included in this motion, Mr. Chairman?
So, uh, yes, below that, I believe it, if we are imposing a condition, which staff did recommend one, uh, the, the condition is written there, and we would, it was discussed that the language, suggested that the language may be changed to the setback variances, uh, shall only apply to the proposed single-family residence.
Okay, and, um...
So, if you wish to impose the condition, yeah, just in it, starting with "in addition..."
Yeah, "in addition, the granting of the variance is made conditioned upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach. One, uh, specifically, the front setback variance shall only apply to the proposed single-family residence."
And just as a note, uh, we were recommending, I think, based on the discussion with staff, that, that that be worded as the setback variances.
I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, uh, in, in one, the front setback variant, instead of variant, I'm sorry, the front?
It'll, strike the word "front."
Okay, the setback variance shall only apply to the proposed single-family residence.
Second.
Am I okay with that?
I, I think so. Uh, is, is there a second?
Someone could, uh, jump in.
Okay, uh, it was, uh, moved by Board Member Hyman and, uh, seconded by Board Member Fields. I'll ask our secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Haggen?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Dana Picot?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes five to zero, congratulations. Okay, um, there are, uh, no administrative appeals, uh, no unfinished business, uh, next item is new business. Is there any new business?
No new business.
I'm sorry?
No, no new business.
Um, and then, other business, I believe, uh, Board Member Hyman, at the beginning of the hearing, when we were discussing the minutes, uh, mentioned, uh, something related to, uh, how some item was, uh, was reflected in the minutes, and then indicated to me at some point in the meeting that he had, uh, he found the item that he wanted to clarify, so I'll turn it over to Board Member Hyman.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate your bailing on me. Um, we, Dana, there was, I would, I will find this, I hope, because I had it up before we made the motion, um, but it is, I think it's, it's a, um, something that ought to be just taken care of, um... And if this wasn't such a long presentation by our first presenter, we'd be there already, um, come on.
Yeah, if you're looking for the minutes, they're around, uh, pages eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
Yeah, I'm getting everything.
Fifteen, uh, and sixteen of the packet.
Thank you. Okay. Before the minutes, there we have, before the minutes, um, we've got something we're calling the attendance record, uh, relative to the zoning board, okay? Um, and it, and I keep an eye on this for myself, uh, because I don't want to overstep my bounds, but, um, I don't understand why Dana has been, has an absence against her when, in fact, there, the, the, the meeting was canceled.
She, uh, so, I, I am looking at the, the, the total on the bottom, and it looks like there are a couple of items that need to be updated there, um, but the absence was related to the March seventh, uh, meeting, uh, as she was on, uh, maternity leave at, at the time, uh, but I think it should, because there were two cancellations, it should read as one present, one absent, and then for, I'm looking at it now, and I, I didn't catch this, uh, Board Member Hyman and Board Member Burgess, uh, should be listed as present twice, rather than three times, because we've only had two meetings.
Right, um, so...
At the, at the bottom.
Can take a point off the board?
Okay, I apologize, so I, I, so the, um, yeah, I missed that part of it, but I, I was, you know, I was just trying to, to, well, let's, you know, I mean, you ought to, you ought to get something for everything you've been through, you know?
Yes, yes.
Um, okay, I won't watch this anymore, and we'll be okay. I apologize for taking up the board's time.
No problem.
We've had a long agenda, and everybody wants to get out of here.
That, that's a good clarification, I'm sure, uh, we can get it, um, uh, adjusted prior to the, uh, next board packet. Um, so with that, uh, we've, uh, gotten to the end of our business, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold favorite, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, at three-thirteen PM, the City of West Palm Beach zoning board of appeals, uh, meeting has been adjourned.